Complete our closed session, so we will be recessing again into closed session at the conclusion of the, of the public session. Which now brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Conrad Kissler. He's a Boy Scout, he's going for a Citizen Merit Badge, and he's an eighth grader at Saint Margaret School. Conrad, please, would you lead us?
May everyone please join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, please be seated. I think at this point, before we do the invocation, Councilmember Thompson, if there's no objection, I'd like to say a few words.
Scout Kissler, can you approach the podium again? I just want to tell the audience, the hard work you've been doing the last year. He was, he was Senior Patrol Leader for Troop 757. He did an outstanding job this, this past year as leading the boys, and what a pleasure to work with a young man of such quality and aptitude as this young man here. He really, really shines, and maybe you could tell the folks a little bit about what your merit badge is for this evening that you're, you're trying to obtain?
So, I came here because I'm working on the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge, and it requires me to attend a city council meeting, and it's a pleasure to be here for the first time, my first council meeting, and I look forward to hearing what goes on here, so I'm very excited to be here, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, I'd ask you all again to please rise for our invocation tonight. The invocation will be provided by Father Brendan of Saint Edward the Confessor.
From the Book of Kings. God said to Solomon, "Ask something of me, and I will give it to you." So Solomon answered, "Oh, Lord my God, you have made me your servant, but I am a mere youth, not knowing at all how to act. I serve you in the midst of your people whom you have chosen. Give your servant therefore an understanding heart, to judge your people and distinguish right from wrong; for who is able to govern this vast people of yours? And God said to him, 'Because you have asked for this, not for a long life for yourself, not for riches, and not for the life of your enemies, but for understanding, so that you may know right from what is wrong, I do as you requested.'" Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless our city council, those gathered here this evening, and all the residents of Dana Point. Like Solomon, may each of us seek an understanding heart and receive your divine wisdom, so that all of us, your servants, the people of Dana Point, may be well-served and blessed with your grace. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Please be seated. We now come to the Presentations and Proclamations portion of the agenda. Tonight, we have a couple of introductions to make to the community, and so what I'd like to do, instead of having them stand at the podium and introduce themselves to us, is all come down and you can introduce yourselves to the community. So the first person we'd like to introduce tonight is OCFA Division Chief Rob Capo Bianco. Rob, would you please go? If you could introduce yourself to the community, I'd like to give you that opportunity. We're all happy to have you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Vicsoorick, and members of the council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, to introduce myself to the council. It sounds like I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago, sorry, I'm two weeks late. But even more importantly, to the residents of Dana Point. I'm proud to say I'm your new Division Three Chief, and to explain a little bit of what that is, I, I represent, I'm the liaison for the city of Dana Point. I also represent San Clemente, Mission Viejo, Santa Margarita, and San Juan Capistrano as their liaison. I, I coordinate and I organize our Urban Search and Rescue Program, which is, is out of Foothill Ranch, and then I also oversee our Apparatus Committee, which designs and purchases new fire equipment. A little bit about myself and my career and how I got here. I started with Orange County Fire back in 1988 as a reserve firefighter, went through school up at UC Santa Barbara, got my degree from there, of which is when I decided I wanted to follow this career path. Put myself through a fire academy, put myself through paramedic school, and was hired as a firefighter/paramedic. I was lucky enough to, to be hired by the agency where I couldn't imagine working. An, an agency like this, a large regional fire department, offers a ton of opportunities, not only to the cities, but to the employees, and I spent my career really taking advantage of that. Some of the, the big things that I think helped develop me, and we'll explain to you what I have to offer, is I spent some time in our training section, Training and Safety, where I developed training programs for our department. I coordinated our reserve and our volunteer programs. But most importantly, it, it allowed me the opportunity to get involved with the ICS classes, Incident Command Structures and System, which allowed me to assist and serve up and down the state on these large wild land fires that you see. Everything from fire mapping to directing and controlling strike teams. And where that applies is, is we learn that, we get that experience, we can bring it back to our communities and respond to our own emergencies, and that experience is, is absolutely invaluable. I've, I've, I've been part of our hazardous materials team, a rescue swimmer for our aquatic rescue team, both swift water as well as open water and offshore rescue. I think what, the, the piece that I enjoyed the most is I got to participate for five years in our fire investigation and arson unit. The piece that I think I can give back to is we, we see a lot of stuff, both as, as the sheriffs and police and as well as the fire department, and the mental health of our people is, is becoming more important as time goes on. We have a Critical Incident Stress Team that I've been part of, that allows us to support each other as we become witness to some of the stuff that we, that we respond to, and so we don't bring that stuff and those pressures home to our families, so to be able, be able to be part of that. As I promoted Battalion Chief, I was able to come back down to the city of Dana Point, where I, I worked as Battalion Six. My last, my last assignment before promoting to this position was in our, back in our Fire Investigation Section as the Chief Investigator. Now that I'm here, what can I bring? I've, I've talked a little bit about a large regional fire protection and what that did for me, but what it does for a city like Dana Point is it offers depth and strength of service. I'm proud to be part of Orange County Fire, I'm even more proud to wear this uniform, but what my job is now is to ensure that the residents and the city of Dana Point get an individualized and a personalized fire protection, fire service, to deal with the issues that are, that are present here, and, and bring it down from that regional thought process down to what we do here in this city. Basically, I've, well, I've had the opportunity to start working with city staff. I spent a half a day with your city manager driving around the city. I was impressed with their professionalism and, and even more the support of what we do. I look forward to getting to know them deeper and, and work with them over the next few years, and most importantly, and I'm going to say it to the city council, but anybody in the public, I'm here for you, I'm here to serve the city of Dana Point. If you ever have questions or comments or concerns that come up, please don't ever hesitate to let me know. I would like to present, on a quarterly basis, we put together a report with some of our stats, the significant events, not only in the county, but here in Dana Point, so I would like to offer that to the city council when they have an opportunity to, to review it. And not only that, but thank you once again for giving me the time, I appreciate it tonight.
Thank you very much. Welcome, congratulations, and we really look forward to working with you to keep our community safe, so we appreciate everything you do. Thanks again.
I look forward to the challenge.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, now, I would like to introduce the new Executive Director of Visit Dana Point. His name is Johnny Westham. Johnny, are you here? Please come on up, and why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself to our community? Welcome.
Thank you, sir. It's nice to, nice to meet you again. Hi, my name's Johnny Westham, and first I want to say thank you to the city council here for this wonderful experience tonight. I had the pleasure of meeting some of you at the Chamber Event a few weeks ago, so it's nice to see you again, and Councilman Mueller and Councilman Tomlinson, it's going to be fun to work with you as well. So, my name's Johnny Westham, I recently come from the city of Sonoma, so thank you, sir, for all your support in the city of Sonoma and Napa, which was ravaged by fires over October, November, and they're bouncing back rather well. A little bit about myself, I, I've been working in the, what we call the Destination Marketing Organization realm for about 13 years. I started my stint in Greater Palm Springs, where we focused on community relations, promotions, marketing, and sales to drive overnight business to hotels, which help with sales tax and with TOT collections, which ultimately generate funds for the general fund of, of the city or community that we work in. After being there for 11 years, I moved to the city of Sonoma and took the Executive Director position there for three years, and focused on building that as a community where we increased overnight stays, again, to impact the bottom line of, of the city, but also to ensure that we stimulated the economy in some certain degree, whether that be working with attractions, restaurants, hotels, spas, golf courses, et cetera. And I guess the, the ultimate goal of any Destination Marketing Organization is really to stimulate the economy. With Visit Dana Point, I started on January 2nd. I also did a, a half-day tour with the city manager here, and it's, it's what a wonderful destination you have in Dana Point. Now, I remember growing up, I used to come here as a kid, and we stayed at some of the hotels, and we surfed on the beaches and things like that, but looking at it from a product standpoint, it's a unique opportunity to really position Dana Point as, as the gem of Orange County. And I think over the next 12 months, 18 months, we have some good programming that's going to, that we're going to roll out, that's really going to showcase Dana Point and the true authenticity that it is, and really promote those unique aspects that make Dana Point such a beautiful and unique destination. So with that, I look forward to serving the council, I look forward to serving the city, and I look forward to serving the community in any regard, so thank you very much.
Very much, and welcome aboard. You want a photo? Apparently not. Thank you again. Moving on to the next part of the agenda is the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or the staff request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any items to be removed by staff?
No, sir.
Anything by the public?
One item, item number seven.
And anything to be removed by council? Seeing none, okay.
Remove the balance.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number seven. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
No, sir, but staff is available for comments if the council has any.
Do we have any public comments? We have one public comment tonight from Tony Nelson from Dana Point. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
I'll just wait for a minute, I've asked Kathy to pass you the Treasurers Report, because you need to look at it to understand what I'm talking about. I think I made seven copies. Okay, Tony Nelson, Capistrano Beach, in Dana Point. I wanted to pull the city Treasurers Report because it has a significant error that I'm not sure anybody else but me would notice, but I think it's important. First of all, if you look at the top of the report where I highlighted it, it says it's for the month of December, but then the cash and investment portfolio says it's as of October 30th. I'm assuming the figures really are December. But of more import is the first line under the cash and investment portfolio, it says that we have a demand deposit that has a book value of 5.6 million, but a market value of 1.6, and that's what kind of gave me a heart attack, when I thought, what happened to US Treasuries overnight that they went down $4 million? And then I realized that it had to be some kind of error, because a demand deposit is basically just your checking account. There is no interest, there is no yield, there's no reason it should have a market value or a par value, it probably should just say NA there. So then I got curious as to, well, where did they get this 1,641, so I started looking back. So if you turn the page to the November one, the November one says that the cash and investment portfolio is for October, so again, we have the month wrong, and in that one, the book value is 2.8 million, and the market value is still 1,641. I have no idea why. Then in October, we got the month right that time, but this time, it went into the reverse. It has a par value of the same 1.641 million, and the book value is 9.65. Absolutely impossible. A checking account cannot change its value, that's just not a possible thing. And then the September report, again, the September one says it's for June, and again, 1,641 million is the par value, and the book value is a million. Then it keeps going. In August, same thing, August says it's for June, numbers are still wrong. August is interesting, because the book value was actually a negative, which somebody should have caught, because normally you wouldn't have a book balance that is negative in your checking account. Somebody didn't make a bank transfer or something. And then in July, we got the month correct, but again, that 1,641 and a different book value. And finally, in June, we get it right. We have the right June, and we have market value and book value equal. So I'm not sure what happened there, but something's awry. And then I looked back at May, just to see, well, does this continue? And unfortunately, May, it happens again. In May, we have a new par value of 5.17 and a book value of 1.8. So somebody's not reviewing this report, someone's not paying attention, and it really needs to be accurate. These are documents that the public relies on, and I think it's important that there's some kind of review, maybe this is something the FRC could look at. And one, one other item is that the, the cash dispersments on your top page is 3.6 million, but your demands that you look at, you know, your warrants are 2.9, so you're not getting all of the check register to look at either. So there's a few things in the cash accounting I think the council should take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Okay. Do you have a question for staff? Please, is there something that you want to ask?
I'll ask a question.
Oh, do you have a question you'd like to ask now?
Mr. Kilber, can you respond to that, please?
Yes, and thank you for pointing out the errors in the middle two columns. The balance column is correct. I'll take a look at what our process, what happened with the two middle columns, but the balance column for each month end is accurate and does tie to our books. The date in the text is obviously wrong, the header at the top is right for the month end date. The other comment about the claims and demands, you are getting all of them, what you are seeing here is timing differences, so claims and demands were constantly bringing to you, and this month-end report comes out at a point in time that cuts off at month end, but your claims and demands, your checks that we're cutting, when we bring you a check register, it might cover beyond a month end, they aren't month-specific, it's, we cut checks each week, we bring the registers with you as we have council meetings. There was one other point I had, but we'll take a look at this, and I'll actually bring something back at your next meeting that reconciles all of them and provides the corrections on those middle columns that honestly, as, as Ms. Nelson pointed out, aren't really relevant for the bank account. Oh, the other point I wanted to make was, once you mentioned the negative at the month end, for book value, we will have checks outstanding that we cut right near month end, and we will, the checks aren't clearing yet, we will have had a transfer within a day or so, so we haven't bounced any checks. But I'll bring back a report at the next meeting that cleans all this up, but thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Nelson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kilber. With that, I'll move the recommended action. If you second it, then we can have a discussion. Very well. Councilman Tomlinson.
So, Mr. Kilber, you're saying that the book value column is correct, those numbers are correct?
That's correct, that's what's in the bank on that day.
You said, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, further discussion. Councilmember Lewis.
Yes, okay, so the motion is to file and receive this, approve this report, is that my understanding?
The motion is written on our agendas, it says, "Recommended action, that the city council receive and file the city Treasurers Report for the month of December 2017."
Okay, so I would just, my discussion would be given that we have errors that will be corrected with the next one, that would not like to file and receive a report that contains errors, so I would recommend that we, we put that off till next month, when we can file and receive both reports, and the corrections will be made.
Is that a substitute motion?
Nope, that's my discussion. So, okay, I'll make a substitute motion. All right, so I make a substitute motion that we do not file and receive the current Treasurers Report, and that we bring it back with the, at the next city council meeting, when the errors have been corrected, and that we then, at that point, can file and receive the report.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Hey, that motion passes five to zero, unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you, before public comments?
On, on what topic?
Well, I have two statements that are 50 words or less, as I'm allowed to do via our policies, and I want to know, do you want them before the public comments, after the public comments?
I, I would prefer they be made under whatever topic that we're addressing on the agenda, or done during, I believe we have council reports would be the, be the proper place for those.
Well, it's not a report, and I guess I could wait till after public comments, because I suspect there'll be some public comments on the statement that I am going to make, so they will be relevant to the public comments, which is why I asked, do you want them before or after the public comments?
Well, if, if there's statements for the record, they're going to be put on the record. I, I do believe the most, the correct place to put them would be under the council reports, but at any rate, you know, at this point, we will move on to public comments, and I guess revisit that if, if they're relevant to them. So, let me, let me first say that there are no ordinance titles to read tonight, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very well. We will move to the public comments portion of our agenda. There will be a three-minute time limit per person, and an overall time limit of 30 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will distribute any handouts you may have. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments? Thank you. Okay. Tonight, our first speaker is Mary Navarro of Dana Point, to be followed by Janine Rutter and Wayne Yost.
Good evening, city council and community members. I come before you to announce my candidacy for Orange County Board of Education for District Five, which is our district. I want to introduce myself to you briefly. I, I am in the neighborhood, so I can well represent our local interests. The district stretches from Newport Beach to San Clemente and inland to Mission Viejo. The district stretches from Newport Beach to San Clemente and inland to Mission Viejo. There are more than 610,000 students that will be represented by this particular position. It is a nonpartisan position. I feel very qualified for this position. I am a third-generation California educator. I have 38 years of experience in public education. I did, however, fail retirement and that what is what brought me out to apply for this position. I still have a love and passion for students and I'd just like to acknowledge the students who are here for civic duty. Students, would you stand? I see four here and another because this is part of our public education. It's more important now than ever that our students are being educated in the elements and fundamentals of democracy and I stand for that. I also stand for the, the core belief that public education is not only the foundation for democracy, but is the foundation for our economy. And through my experience in managing multiple and complex physical, fiscal budgets from state and federal, local and, and private institutions, I feel capable and competent and proud to represent my city, Dana Point. And I hope that you will remember, students, the election is June 5th and I hope everybody votes because it's not just going to be about the Congress. I think we need to start tending our own garden, focusing on local government where democracy occurs at the grassroots. And so it's with respect and humility that I request your support in this endeavor to represent you and the many wonderful students in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Janine Rutter.
Can you guys hear me okay? Good. I moved here this summer and I-
A little closer and have a little, thank you.
Right there? Okay. I moved here this summer and I noticed something a little bit strange. I noticed down by Doherty Beach and then also along Del Abyspo, a couple of folks dragging suitcases. And I asked one of my neighbors, why are they doing that? And my neighbor told me, oh, they're probably homeless and they probably got kicked out of one of the sober living facilities. And I thought to myself, how could that happen? And since that time, I've learned a lot more about these facilities. In fact, I've talked to several people about them. I want to give you guys two examples of two different people I've been in touch with. One was a mother who sent her child, or her daughter, to one of these facilities. And she told me that when her daughter came home, she was more traumatized than she was before she went to the facility. Her daughter told her horrific things about abuse, about people being burned and about people dying. The second mother that I talked to discussed something from a different perspective. She lives in a neighborhood not too far from mine and she has two little girls and she has three of these facilities on her one street. She told me stories of used hypodermic needles in the neighborhood, trash thrown in her yard, and also individuals that looked like gang members hanging out on her street and entering in and out of one of the facilities. My understanding is we have 24 licensed facilities, which makes us number three per capita for licensed facilities in California. We also have 43 unlicensed that we know of. So that's approximately 70 facilities right now in Dana Point. This is unconscionable for a city that's this size. I know that Mr. Denny has done the best he can with trying to address some of these facilities with individual lawsuits, and I think we've actually won one of those. But as much as I think we all can appreciate that, we have to do more. We need a more proactive approach. Surrounding cities have done things. I implore you to please relook at all options. A moratorium, business license, ordinances, education for our citizens. HOAs are helpless without your assistance. These facilities have no boundaries. One can open up next door to you. We have to do more now, not only for the victims inside of these facilities, but also for the victims that live around these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Wayne Yost of Dana Point.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council staff, members of the community. My name is Wayne Yost. I'm a 35-year resident of Dana Point, commander of VFW Post 9934, and a member of the Dana Point Task Force on Homelessness. I did not come here to say what I'm about to say, but in light of Ms. Rutter, I just wanted to dovetail that a little bit. Last week, Monday, at our monthly homeless task force meeting, I invited Sharon Campbell, who is the administrative assistants for Assemblyman Bill Bro, to come in and address the members of the task force specifically, but the members of the community as a whole, on some of the pitfalls and legislative hurdles that we have in what Ms. Rutter just described. By legislative law, in many, if not most instances, we are unable to regulate these facilities. And at the end of Sharon Campbell's dissertation, I got up and I addressed the public and I said very specifically, if you don't like the laws and you don't like the permissiveness as far as addressing the homelessness and the associated crime and drug use, then get off your butts and call your state assembly people and write them and email them and tell your friends and your neighbors to write them and email them. And after you do that, write them and email them again. And if you still don't get any results, then vote them out of office and get somebody in there who will respond to the needs of our city. And that's what it's all about. You've got the power. You can vote. You can put people in that'll do what you want them to do. So much for the part that I wasn't going to talk about. I've left some of these flyers out on the front table in the, in the reception area and I've also left it on each of the city council and city staff's mailbox. On Friday, February 23rd at 5:00 PM, the Veterans of Foreign Wars is going to conduct a ceremony with dignity to retire worn and tattered American flags. It's going to be down at the Capistrano Beach Fire Rings, which is located on Coast Highway and Palisades Drive at 5:00 PM. The members of the public are invited to attend, bring any worn or tattered flags that you wish to have disposed of with dignity. We will have a formal ceremony. We have invited Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and we've gone around to all the schools to invite the students and their parents to attend this as well. It will be a community event and we will be posting an article in the next issue of the Dana Point Times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. The next three speakers are Mr. Steve Stewart, Ms. Nancy Leonard, and Mr. Mark Zanidis.
My name is Steve Stewart. I'm a resident of Dana Point. And I'm here to speak to the issue of competitive bidding for our legal contract. I've had a chance to read the motion that came from the Finance, Financial Review Committee. It talks about several issues related to cost of, of legal services in this city. Present costs that we pay are, are in excess of what other cities pay for the same services and our city spends overall more money on litigation than similar cities of, similar cities of similar size. All of this points at the need to do competitive bidding on our city attorney contract. So the FRC recommends that we move to competitive bidding and it's my understanding that tonight the, the council had a meeting in closed session citing application of the Brown Act, what I believe to be misapplication of the Brown Act, to address the matter of competitive bidding on legal services. Legal services is too important of an issue for this city and there are plenty of, of indicators that it needs to be reviewed and, and competitively bid. It's a budgetary matter. It ought to be handled in open session and I hope that you will meet, move to meet that requirement and do something about it in an open session at the earliest possible opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next up is Nancy Leonard.
Good evening again, Nancy Leonard, Dana Point. I understand that the matter of the city attorney contract in closed session will be continued and discussed in closed session after the conclusion of this meeting. And so that is why I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier tonight. Rattan and Tucker is a law firm. They are a vendor with the city of Dana Point. They are not employees. Neither the city attorney that's representing us here tonight nor any of the Rattan and Tucker staff are employees of the city. They are not covered. The item on the agenda to go out for a competitive bid, to address staff to do an RFP and go out for competitive bid is not a personnel issue, it's a financial issue. And it's an issue that was brought to your attention by the recommendation of the FRC and I have their motion. It is strictly a financial issue. It is not an issue that's covered by the Brown Act. And to place it under the guise of the Brown Act and to go into closed session to discuss this is a violation of the Brown Act. There is absolutely no question about it. It is extremely self-serving for our city attorney to sit here and advise you on that. Isn't it ironic that the, that the firm, the contract that they're, we're questioning the costs on, is here representing you and giving you advice on whether to discuss his contract and, and as a competitive bid item in closed session? This contract needs to go out for competitive bid. That process should be discussed in open session. The request should be that the council follow the recommendation that was a 4-0 vote by the FRC based on a very good study that was done on what we pay compared to what similar cities pay, our neighboring cities pay, for the same law firm and for other law firms. It is absolutely ridiculous and unheard of that this contract, this matter, which is a financial matter only, be heard in closed session under the guise of the Brown Act. This is not a personnel issue. It is not an issue on quality of performance. It is not a performance issue. Rattan and Tucker would be free to bid on a new contract. But to put this in a closed session item, in my opinion, and the research I have done, would be a clear violation of the Brown Act. If you look at the FRC's motion, it is strictly a financial motion. It is a financial decision based on a recommendation of the Financial Review Committee, which voted 4-0 with one member absent that night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Next up is Mr. Mark Zanidis. Welcome, Mr. Zanidis.
Briefly, I echo Ms. Leonard's concerns, but I have a different, a different aspect to look at. Councilwoman Lewis asked the city attorney in the five o'clock session whether or not it was required that these things, these two items go into closed session. And the answer was, well, that's a nuanced question. Leaving aside the term nuanced, it's really not a nuanced question. In a non-disciplinary, personnel disciplinary matter, the decision to take this, these two matters into open session is up to your discretion. Even if you think, even if, and he said he thinks he has no problem with it and the Brown Act permits you to do it. The Brown Act, even if that's true, and I don't think it is, I think it's wrong, but even if you, even if that's true, you're not required to do it. So you're not, you don't have the cover, in short, of a mandatory secret meeting. This would be a discretionary act taken to have your deliberations on these two important matters conducted in secret. The question is, why would you do that? I don't know how these got put on the secret calendar. What possible reason would there be? What principled reason in view of all of the assertions of transparency, responsive city government, adherence to conservative budget principles, and responsiveness to the community? How is that consistent with any of those things that, that all members of this council have repeatedly spoken about? So, leaving aside the issue of legality, and I understand that's a touchy one and, and I'm sure you don't want to be held in violation of the Brown Act in any way, and I'm not threatening litigation, I think that was a slight overreaction. But the bottom line is, this is, this is discretionary on your part, in my opinion. So you have to ask yourself, are you going to stand before the voters and say, we took the decision as a matter of discretion to hide these deliberations for what principled reason? That's what you have to ask yourself. I don't see one. They are budgetary matters. They're process, not personnel. And I would invite you to reopen this matter in the public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanidis. With that, I will close the public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order motion, which can interrupt and can be heard immediately. And I will say that I put Item D on the closed session, that is, that is currently on the closed session, I put that on the agenda in the open session and I move, that it may move back now, Item D, the competitive bid and the attorney-written report be moved back to open session.
The-
That it is a breach of the rules and that it is a violation of the Brown Act to keep it where it is.
So the, I'm reading, it says, the point of order, any council member may require the mayor to enforce the rules of the council by rating, raising a point of order. What, what rules of the council are you referring to?
That is a breach of parliamentary procedure in this council to put something on a closed agenda that belongs on the open agenda. I believe that is a breach of parliamentary procedure and it, more important in this case, it is, in my view, a, my concern is that we are violating the Brown Act. So I would at least ask this council, especially in light of, not just now, but at closed session, that we take a minute and, and debate whether it belongs in the open session or closed session, but my motion is to move it back to open session where I put it.
I, I guess I'm, the, the, the rules of the council, I'm, I'm looking for, my understanding with all the, all the comments that were made about whether this can be on the closed session or the open session, and we've actually received an opinion from the city attorney that this is properly put on the closed session agenda. I'm trying to find where that would be, but is, and also this, this is part of public comment, I, I guess I need a little guidance. Is this the proper place to hear this motion or?
Under your rules, there is a provision for a call for orders of the day is the title it's under. It's on page five of your resolution. And any council member may demand that the agenda be followed in the order stated. Doesn't require a second and the mayor shall comply unless the council by a majority of votes sets aside the agenda order of the day. It's not a debatable motion. That's, that strikes me as the relevant provision of your rules for addressing an agenda item. I'm, I'm not aware of any council rule that's not being followed and Councilmember Lewis didn't mention any in response to your question that would make point of order the proper motion.
Mr. Zanidis, I can't hear you. Can you speak up just a tad?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I missed a lot of that, so.
So the, to enforce the order of the agenda, you use the provision called call for order of the day. And there's a process for that in your rules. To call for a point of order, your rules say that the mayor may be required to enforce the rules of the council by raising a point of order, but I'm not sure what rules of the council were referring to. The, you know, the, the Brown Act-related issues, I think you voted on previously with respect to your motion to table.
The order of the day is, I can't have, I can't tell him to follow the agenda when the item that I am speaking about, Item D, the competitive bid and the written report by the attorney are not in the proper place. I would like him to follow it by putting it in the new business where I believe it belongs and so I am making a motion to move it from where it currently is- it currently is in the closed session to open session as new business, and then we can follow the agenda.
Which falls within the category of calls for the order of the day, in my estimation.
So, I have a question, Mr. Menos. When I motioned earlier to table this agenda item until a future date, what precedence does that have over what we're talking about right now?
It's your guys' meeting. I mean, you have some discretion to do at some level the things you want, okay? You know, following your rules, this topic appears to me to have already been tabled, but if you want to reconsider it, that's up to you.
So, I have made a motion. Is there a second?
Okay. I'll go ahead. We'll call for a second.
Do we need a second before we...
Before we discuss, we would need a second.
I will second it for the sake of discussion at this point. I still have questions, though, that I would like to answer.
And now that we have a motion and a second, I'll open up for discussion, if you'd like to ask your questions.
As the moving party, I get to speak first, please. So, in July 3, 2007, and again, December 14, 2005, the city council actually considered and debated changes to the city attorney agreement. The minutes reflect that both of those were heard in open session. So, I would like these added. I would also say that, under the Brown Act, debate is required to be open, and that by permission, not mandatory, there are a couple limited categories where the council can decide to move them to closed session. The category that was chosen was employee performance evaluation. Now, my motion has nothing to do with the FRC whatsoever. In fact, it was based on Mr. Kilibrus' research and 45-page report regarding the city attorney and payments that other cities make and that this city makes. And based on that, and the financial differential between what this city pays and what other cities pays, I put this on the agenda. To me, to exclude the public from hearing this debate is not only a violation of the Brown Act, but I feel it is a disservice to our residents who are looking for us to be open and transparent. It's not enough for them to hear what we decide. They need to hear why we decide what we decide. Why are, what are we thinking? Why do we want to do the things we do? Why do we vote the way we vote? That is the essence of democracy, and I think to hide this in a closed session and not allow our residents to hear that does not allow us to put our residents first and make them feel that they are important to this process, and they are. So, I would ask that we move this into open session and be open and transparent, so our residents can see how we govern this town and how we, as stewards of their money, spend their money.
Thank you. Further discussion. Councilman Y.
Yes, I have a follow-up discussion on Councilmember Tomlinson's question earlier, which we, I'm unclear. Earlier, we voted to table this motion to a future date, at the request so we could get more backgrounded information on it. Do we have to untable it, if you will, to continue discussion? I mean, I'm unclear how the process here works before we decide to do it.
Your rules say that... Sorry. Your rules say that, in order to bring back the matter before the council, a motion must be adopted that the matter be taken from the table at the same meeting in which it was placed on the table.
Okay, so...
So, then I will amend my motion to say that I am taking it from the table and moving it to open session from closed session.
There are two different issues. One was the tabling issue. So, under your rules, to take something off the table is a motion in and of itself. And the second issue would be, once it's off the table, whether you want to put these items into open session rather than closed session.
Okay. So, we went, in a sense, out of order if we were going to do that. First, we have to vote on whether we're taking the motion to lay it on the table off the table.
Correct.
And that, I believe, was the motion I just heard.
Yes, I'm taking it off the table.
Is there a second to take the motion off the table? Seeing none, that motion dies. Okay, moving on. We're into public hearings. I will call item number 10, which is an appeal of the planning commission approval for coastal development permit, CDP 17, tag 0016, a variance V170001, site development permit, SDP 170029, for an addition to remodel to an existing duplex in the residential beach road duplex 18, located at 35099 Beach Road in the coastal zone. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Senior Planner John Champa is providing tonight's staff report on this item.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor. City Councilmember John Champa, I'm the case planner for the Halleck duplex project. The project is located within the Capistrano Bay District, also known as the Beach Road Community, which is a private community located within the RBRD 18 zoning designation. The property is improved with a 3,600-square-foot, two-story duplex with a carport that provides parking for three spaces, or three vehicles. Just to give you a little background on this property, it was a duplex that was originally constructed in 1964 with a variance that allowed for a reduced front yard setback up to five feet for the carport. As a condition of the variance, it restricted the living area above the carport. The structure is also legal nonconforming because it is located in the FP3 overlay and is a slab-on-grade construction where typically caissons would be required to elevate the structure above coastal flooding. Project site is also legal nonconforming because it only provides three covered parking spaces when four are required per code. The nonconforming structure is limited to a, because the structure is legal nonconforming, it's limited to a one-time 10% addition, as well as annual remodel improvements up to a 10% value of the structure. The project's scope is requesting a 364-square-foot addition, or 10% of the existing structure's square footage, for a second-floor addition to create a new bedroom and bathroom over the carport, a facade remodel to convert the structure to a contemporary design, and close a portion of the carport, a new exterior stairway to provide access to the upper unit, as well as repair the upper unit's deck. This is the existing structure. It is typical of the 1960s contemporary style, as it appears today. This is the site plan. In red is identifying the new improvements that are proposed on the landward side of the structure and would comply with the required front yard setback for the second story of 15 feet. This is the project rendering, which shows the facade remodel, as well as the addition and carport improvements to update the structure to a contemporary design, which would be consistent with the neighborhood. The project requires coastal development because of its location within the coastal zone and appeals jurisdiction, as well as on the beach area between the sea and the first public road. Project conforms to the city-certified local coastal program, as well as the zoning ordinance development standards. Project has no impacts to public access or coastal, or public recreational facilities, and the nearest public access point is 560 feet away to the north. The variance, as previously stated, was issued in 1964 for the reduced front yard setback of five feet. Carport variance restricted livable area above the carport. So, the proposed variance is to clarify the original intent and address the restriction for the original approval for the living area above the carport. The addition over the carport does comply with the required 15-foot front yard setback for the second story. This is just a visual graphic to give you perspective in terms of what's being proposed. We have the front of the property line here, the six-foot existing front yard setback to the carport. This is the detached carport structure here. For the first floor, it is required per code 20 feet front yard setback typically for the zone. And in the dash line here is a second story of 15 foot for the second story. The yellow lines above the carport indicate the proposed addition, and the checkered lines indicate the request for the proposed variance because of the original condition of the 1964 variance. Site development permit is required because of the nonconforming condition of the property. Project complies with the 10% addition, as well as the 10% remodel improvements for this year. The addition is located on the second floor, out of the hazard area and on the inland side of the structure. The addition is also, as well as the exterior facade improvements, are architecturally integrated into the design of the structure and provides visual relief to reduce massing and comply with the design guidelines. The planning commission's review of the project approved it with the restriction that the carport improvements not include the operable door. Planning commission's concerns with the project related to the carport improvements would be potentially granting of a special privilege. The carport could be used for storage. The improvements may not be consistent with the intent of the original variance, and it was unclear if the improvements maintained the carport as a carport. Following the planning commission's decision, the applicant appealed the project on October 5, 2017. In preparation, staff completed the following, which was a survey of the beach road community to get better perspective in terms of the makeup and character of the community, as well as further evaluated the carport definition, which in turn resulted in evaluating the enclosed parking structure definition, reviewed the applicant's argument in the appeal, and evaluated the planning commission's opposition to the carport improvements. This table illustrates the findings of the survey that staff completed of the beach road community, which illustrates that there are a number of properties within the community that have reduced front yard setbacks, as well as there are very few properties that are improved with carports throughout the community. To help facilitate the discussion and ambiguity that the planning commission had in regards to whether the proposed improvements maintained the carport as an, in fact, carport, staff relied on both the carport definition, which is provided here, as well as the enclosed parking structure definition, both of which were provided in your staff report. The key component of the carport definition that staff evaluated was the factor that it requires a carport to be enclosed on less than four sides. And with the enclosed parking structure, for it to be an enclosed structure requires less than 25% of the total wall area to be open to the atmosphere. Staff utilized those to make the determination that the proposed improvements still, in fact, maintain the structure as a carport. Just to give you some visual representation in terms of the open areas in blue on your screen, in support of staff's evaluation that the improvements still maintain the structure open on at least one side, and the open area was evaluated to be 20, I'm sorry, 32%. And with evaluating the lattice area, it would still be open at 27%. So, it'd still meet that 25% threshold as identified on the enclosed parking structure definition. The addition of the operational door maintains the structure as a carport still, and the carport improvements with the door would be consistent with the neighborhood, as illustrated by the survey of the community in the table on the previous slide. This is the project site, Ariel. Staff also wanted to provide the additional, or illustrate the additional amenity to the site, in that there are three additional parking stalls which are available to the property owner on an annual lease from OCTA, which are illustrated here across the private road. The project meets the required findings, and that is conformance with the city's certified local coastal program, complies with all the necessary policies of the Coastal Act, and complies with the required findings for the coastal development permit, variance, and the site development permit. Staff is recommending approval of the application with the attached draft resolution and conditions of approval. Staff would also like to mention that if the, that if the approval is as proposed by the applicant, then staff would recommend removal of condition number 27, which places the restrictions on the improvements to the carport, which require the removal of the garage door, or I'm sorry, of the operable door to the carport. However, if the planning commission's approval is upheld, then staff would recommend leaving condition 27 as is. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff around the horn? Councilman Tomlinson?
Yes. Condition number 27, is that, now, there's currently no garage door, and I've heard the word lattice being used. Is that some sort of see-through or door that's kind of, explain that to me.
So, the garage door, or I'm sorry, the operable door to the carport is factored in as a closed area. The lattice area along the sides, which I can pull back to a previous slide, bear with me, is that open area in blue. So, that is intended by the applicant to provide some additional security for the carport area.
And I think a lot of people think of lattice as crisscrossing lattice, that very stereotypical, you can go to Home Depot and buy. These are more like levers, right? They're horizontal planes. There is no vertical or diagonal plane. So, they're about two inches thick with spacing in between, just so that when we use the word lattice, that's what's being described.
So, these lattice structures you're talking about would be on the sides, not along facing the road?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Y.
So, the lattice structure is, by your definition, then considered open?
Yes, that's why staff also evaluated the enclosed parking structure to get a better understanding in terms of, does this improvement, is it, does it close off this area? Is it open? And that's where staff keyed into the element of that definition, which specified that it was open to the atmosphere, as well as staff evaluated specifically just the open areas in between the lattice, and still concluded that 27% of the area for the entire wall area of the carport is open.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you go back to the rendering? Thank you. So the, so one of the concerns and variances filed initially was that there was not adequate parking for this duplex, right? It was, the requirement was for parking spaces. It only parked three. And that was part of the reason why various variants was issued in 1964. Can you show me on this where the parking areas are that would be in this updated plan?
Yes, and just to provide some clarification to your statement is the variance was strictly for the setback. At that point in time, the parking requirements were not consistent with our today's requirements, which require four covered parking spaces. So the existing three spaces were considered consistent with the code at that point in time.
Okay.
So the parking spaces two would be located within the more enclosed area located here.
Okay.
That would facilitate parking space for two stalls. And then the third stall would be located in this open area here.
Okay. So, well, the reason I ask is one of the concerns of the, that was brought up in this, in the discussion with the planning commission was that it was underparked and there was variances related to that. So I was just trying to look. I looked at the structure and it did not look like you could put three cars inside the enclosed structure. So I was, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, I just want to be clear about the planning commission's concern was not about, so it is legal nonconforming, the three parking spaces. So the development was approved with three parking spaces, which was in alignment with the code at the time. The code later changed, so it's today legal nonconforming. The planning commission's concern was that by adding an operable door to the carport, it's now creates a hidden area and that somebody could then decide to store things in there instead of put cars in. And so that concern had to do with an operable door making someone more inclined to use it as storage versus to park vehicles.
Right, understood, yeah. And I understand why now, when I realize that that side is, in fact, for all practical purposes covered, even though, and secured, even though it has slots between it, why they would have had that concern. So, thank you. I do, by the way, think that, just as a comment, the planning commission took a lot of time to think through the project and try to look at it carefully in their, so I, while it's coming back, I want to compliment the work they did to really understand all the way back through 1964 to now, what the issues were and what possibilities existed and what they thought was overriding variances were issued. So I think they, no matter what we decide here, I think they should be complimented on the work they did.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Councilmember Lewis, do you have anything? Okay, Mayor Lieutenant Miller?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Could you remind me what the staff recommendation was at the planning commission?
The staff recommendation was for approval.
For?
As proposed by the applicant, yes.
Okay. Could you, you know, you've been talking about enclosed parking structures. Do you have a definition for garage?
Um, I'd have, I'd have to look at our code.
Give me a second while we look into that.
Mr. Mayor, I have the, if we could pull the screen up, I have the definition here, which I can highlight. So it reads an enclosed building or structure or part thereof used or intended to be used for the parking and storage of motor vehicles.
And so how does that differ from enclosed parking structure?
I think that they complement each other. One of the key elements that we were using to help facilitate our determination whether it was a carport or a garage was that the carport states that it is enclosed on less than four sides. So what does enclosed mean? That's why we referred back to enclosed parking structure, which gave us specific percentage, which we then went through and evaluated the square, the wall footage of the structure and made the determination that it is open and that that facilitate, and it was open on two sides with the lateral lattice, which facilitated the carport definition.
Do you have anything?
I was, I think it's an enclosed building or structure is in the definition of garage. So I think it's appropriate then to go look at enclosed parking structure, and they do not contradict each other. But the enclosed parking structure provides further clarity because this would still not be that clear. It provides a standard in terms of what does enclosed mean, and it's 25% or less open to the atmosphere.
Okay. Could you put the graphic back up? Actually, if you could, not so much the rendering, but the graphic about the space above the carport and where the stairway is going to be and actually, go back up to number seven. Or I think that's the one, no, that's not it. Yeah, that one, okay. So I'm looking at the area in red where you're showing the new stairs. And I'm trying to understand which walls are actually open here. Is, did they enclose that wall that's going up? It looks like the stairs are in between the original building and the carport. Is that where they are?
There are walls in between the carport and the building. However, on either side, they would remain open to meet the necessary.
So it's those two side walls. So is this area here with the stairs in it, is that enclosed?
I think a portion would be for the necessary railing in that matter. However, I think that the elevation on the plans does illustrate that.
Because it looks like on the opposite side from where the stairs are, is that a wall? It's a dash line, doesn't show, I don't know that it's showing an opening.
There is an open area along the first floor, and then on the southern end of the structure, there's open areas on the first floor and second floor.
Okay.
It creates essentially a breezeway on the upper and lower floors.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. That's not enclosed, adding square footage.
Correct. Yes, staff did evaluate that thoroughly to ensure that it did not exceed the 10% threshold. And so the stairs improvements are actually included in the 10% remodel evaluation for the, for the year.
Okay. All right. And could you, could you address why the original permit said there was no living provided over the carport, why they did that?
Staff struggled with that initially in terms of, and that was one of the reasons for the variances, that it was unclear if there isn't a, if there is a setback of 15 feet, did they just mean that you couldn't continue the structure vertically from the requested five-foot variance, and it required an additional setback for the upper floors? Or that it wasn't allowed for any portion of new enclosed area above the carport? So that's one of the reasonings for the need of the variance.
And if, through the mayor, I may add, because the record's not clear. So we went back to try to look at the minutes, look at the record, to try to understand that, and there just wasn't anything there. So we took the more conservative approach to say that it meant that there could be no area above the entire carport when bringing it forward.
Okay. All right. So explain to me a little bit about the 10% addition out of the hazard area. Where does the hazard area end? Because I'm assuming you're talking about the area above the carport that's going to be added, correct?
Yes, so the hazard area is the area that's subject to coastal flooding. So the entire building, because it is located on slab-on-grade foundation, whereas the new projects that the planning commission would see are elevated with the, with caissons out of that hazard area. So the hazard area has been identified to go to the railroad tracks.
So how is this out of, you said this is out of the hazard area? The 10% addition is out of the hazard area, but you just said the hazard area goes all the way to the tracks?
The hazard, the addition is located on the second floor, so it's not exacerbating any.
Okay, I got it. So the hazard area is just the ground floor, the second stories are not considered in the hazard area?
Yeah, so they have to be on caissons, which, so usually the habitable area then is elevated out of the hazard area. And in this case, it's legal nonconforming, so the ground floor gets to stay as is, but they're not adding to that because the addition's on the second story.
So is it in or out of the hazard area?
Well, it's in the FP3 floodplain district. So the floodplain district goes all the way to the railroad. So if this house were to be scraped and brand new, the whole thing would be on caissons.
Maybe, I'm not asking this question right. During your presentation, you said the 10% addition was out of the hazard area.
It's elevated.
And what you're saying now is that it's not out of the hazard area, it's in the hazard area.
Well, it's
Because it's not on caissons.
It's mitigated and elevated. The 10% addition is elevated above the base flood elevation.
So it is out of the hazard area?
It's above the base flood elevation, but it's within the FP3 district.
Explain to me why you said it's out of the hazard area? Because right now, you're not willing to say that again. I'm trying to understand what that meant.
So due to wave run-up studies that have been conducted and different analysis, it's a high-hazard area, which has been determined to go all the way to the railroad tracks. We've had, I think, another appeal on this topic. So it is within the FP3 district. The way you mitigate that is by elevating structures above the base flood elevation. The 10% addition is elevated above the base flood elevation. So it is outside of an area of concern, but it's within the FP3 district.
Okay. All right. I'll let, I understand what you mean by, but that statement that's out of the hazard area doesn't really seem like that, that's a completely accurate statement. But I understand what you mean by that. And then it also, they have a 10% improvement on this house, correct?
Correct.
10% a year is what they can do, is that right? And now can you go back to the elevation? There you go. Oh, you just won't buy it. Excellent. Has all of that additional facade work taken place?
Yes, and it has been evaluated through the basis in terms of how we value improvements for the Beach Road area, which is per our building permitting evaluation. So this is consistent, has been evaluated for those improvements, as well as the exterior facade, the garage, the deck repair, I'm sorry, the stairs, the deck repair and the facade.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, just a couple of follow-ups. Can you put slide 10 up there? I think it's slide 10. I just need some clarification. I'm looking at the distance between 38 feet and 29 feet. That's, that's open sky there now?
Yes, sir.
And it's not the plan, and I see the plan is to build over that on top of the carport. But right now, it is open sky. So when they originally built the carport, they left a nine-foot space between the carport and the building?
That's correct.
Do you know, I know there's, we don't really know, back in 1964, well, I'll ask you, do you know why there is that space?
Maybe the applicant can speak to that. I, I don't know what the purpose was that for, of that was for.
Okay, but the, if I understand, the original permit did not allow any building on top of the carport at all, even after 29 feet, even though if the carport weren't there, they could have built out to 20 feet, correct? Do you see the numbers I'm pointing on the screen?
Yes, and that goes back to what the community development director expresses, that the approval and the condition were quite vague, so it was unclear if it was over the entire carport period or to the 15-foot second-story setback requirement.
Okay. The, as I see this, obviously, the, so at 38 feet, the livable space goes out to 38 feet on both the first floor and the second floor, correct?
Correct.
And those are, those are the separate units of the duplex, correct?
Yes, upper, upper unit and lower unit.
Okay. Do the surrounding homes are, how many of those are duplexes? Did you, was that on your chart that you had?
Um, I didn't actually do the permit research to determine that. However, there in the table, I believe there's somewhere around 38 properties within the duplex zoning for that, for the community within Beach Road.
Okay. You may not have done this then, but of those duplexes, do you know how many, do they all have garages that stick out from the building, or is the first floor usually used for the garage and the parking spaces?
From my recollection, the first floor was used for the garage area.
Of the other duplexes, but this one has the variance to push the carport out?
Yes.
Does that question make sense? Okay.
Yeah, others had that. I mean, the character of the neighborhood had very few disconnected structures such as this, where the parking area was incorporated into the overall building design. This is one of very few remaining of this era where it was segmented or had a carport or even parking like this.
But if I may clarify, a majority, over 50% of the properties on Beach Road, so duplexes as well as single-family homes, do encroach into the front yard setback. That's what we, what was found through the survey. Now, it sounds like there were a few that actually have detached carports or a detached garage, which is essentially what, what's here is a detached structure. So there's relatively few of those, but the majority of properties, their garages, while attached, do encroach into the front yard setback, because it was 50-something percent overall.
Okay. Just one last question. If they had not built a carport, would they have been able to park their cars on their property there?
Based on what I've seen from the community, the majority of the properties do provide some kind of parking, off-street parking. So it's my assessment that some, some parking facilities would have been required when it was originally constructed.
Okay. In light of the questions, are there any further questions? Go around the horn. Not seeing any, okay. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. First, to start the public hearing, the appellant or applicant will be given 10 minutes to make a presentation. Here on behalf of the applicant is Mr. Rob Williams. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Rob Williams. I'm with Studio Six Architects. We're the architects that are here representing our client, the Halex. And I thought Jonathan did a great job on the staff report, not only when we submitted the plans to the planning commission, with their recommendations, they approve it as is, but did a really good job on putting this appeal together, allowing us to put a garage door on our project. So the biggest question is, and probably back to Councilman Moller, this entire property is in a flood zone. All of Beach Road is on a flood zone. There are nonconforming structures. This is one of them, this is a duplex. So in the code, This is one of them, this is a duplex. So, in the code, it specifically says, there is a one-time, and only a one-time, 10% addition on the inland side that you can get, and that's what we're going for, is the one-time addition. The addition that we're doing is on the second floor. Doesn't say that you had to actually build it on the second floor. You could have done that one-time addition on the first floor. We've done it on the second floor. Because of the constraints of the detachment, I'm sorry, I don't know why they would have built that, I was five. So, '64, for some reason, they built this. They decided they wanted a two, three-car carport detached, and they applied for a variance in '64, and they got it. And the conditions at the time, when the county approved it, it was county then, they approved it without allowing a second floor. So, that's why we started this whole process. One, we wanted a 10% one-time addition, and it's allowed for a nonconforming structure, which is what we have. And we wanted to build on a carport that got a variance. There are several projects, and we're actually working on another one, believe it or not, that have a garage that's eight-foot, but they didn't go for a variance. It's just eight-foot. It's a garage. It's attached to the house. We're adding a second floor on it, and we don't even have to go for a variance, but for some reason, this specific project had to go for a variance, and the variance had these conditions put on it. So, what we're doing, we're trying to get through these conditions, and because of the 10% one-time, we can't tear this garage down. We would love to tear this garage down, and start over, and probably keep it where it is, but we can't, because we're dealing with a variance, and we'd have to go for a new variance. So, we're dealing with an existing variance to allow the second floor. Now, remember, the second floor complies to the front yard setback, it's 15 feet. 15 feet is the closest. If you see, the house, the whole second floor bounces around, so just at one point, it's at 15 feet, everything else goes through there. If you drive down that area, we are probably one of the lowest structures in all of Beach Road. Even with this addition, we're going to seem substantially smaller, even with this addition. And all we're asking is, we feel we've done a nice job, change in the architecture, because we're using the constraints of the 10% one-time inland addition, plus, once every 12 months, they're allowed to do improvements to the existing structure that don't exceed 10% of the value of the house, not the value of the property, the structure itself. So, we've been working on this project since September of 2016, and here we are, February of 2018. We're about ready to submit for permits, but we're here tonight asking that you take what the planning commission, and I agree with, I think it was Commissioner Wyatt, saying that the planning commission did a great job, they did. I was here talking back and forth with them, trying to get them to understand why we wanted a garage door. They did a great job. Staff has done a great job as well. All we're asking is, we've got a client that owns a duplex, he wants to do some improvements, we can substantially improve the property in the street appearance, he just wants a garage door. On the sides, we are putting louvers, not lattice, we're doing louvers. The louvers are made out of metal, and they have gaps, because we have to stay within the definition of the carport. So, we're working with the city's definition of a parking structure, and the city's definition within the carport, to allow a garage door. Is he going to store things in there? Yeah, two cars. He's not looking to store additional things other than that. This is not his main house. This is the house that he's going to come to on the second floor, and then, from the areas down below, he's going to rent it out, you know, for six, nine, 10, 12 months, whatever it ends up being. He's going to rent out the lower section, but he's going to have the upper section, and he wants a garage. As the owner, they'll pull his cars in there, and it's protected. So, all we're asking tonight is that you, that's why we appealed it, is to allow the garage door to remain. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say, unless you guys have some additional questions for me.
Okay. Thank you very much. What we'll do now is go to public comments, and after that, you'll have five minutes for rebuttal, if there are any public comments. So, at this point, let me ask the clerk, are there any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Okay. Close public comments on this item. I suppose you don't have any rebuttal, since there were no public comments, which means I will move next to bring it back to the council, if the council has any questions for the applicant. So, once again, I'll go around the horn. Do you have anything, Ms. Thompson? Councilman Wyatt? Councilmember Lewis? Councilmember Lewis, any questions? Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got one quick question, and I guess for the, the appellant, and he'll probably be able to answer, there's somebody that the staff can. So, he's going to be using the top unit, the owner will use the top unit, they want the two parking spaces, the enclosed parking structures, is that the right way we're calling it?
It's a carport, yeah.
All right. The carport with the garage door on it, got it?
Well, not a garage, it's a, it's a door, but not a garage door.
Right, right. And then you have the three spaces across the street, basically, in the OCTA right-of-way?
Right.
And I see that they're only valid for a year.
He would use it every year.
How long can that happen? Could somebody else come in and offer more, another, another neighbor? How does that work?
He has first right.
What's that?
He has first right.
Okay. And that's in a document somewhere that says I get first?
The staff has a copy of the document we gave him.
Okay, so he has first right or refusal on that for?
That's correct.
And so, what would happen if for some reason, the owner decided not to renew that, lost those three spaces, but still wanted to use it as a rental unit? Not saying that would happen, I just, I'm just wondering what would happen?
Well, the structure is considered legal nonconforming. It's three parking spaces available on-site, and so, those three spaces would be utilized.
And so, what triggers the fourth space being needed? That it's two units?
No. So, if our zoning code says that you do not have to bring a project into conformance with the new rules, if you're legal nonconforming, until you do over 10%?
No, I understand all that. My question is-
50%. So, we can't require four parking spaces?
I understand that. My question is, what, is it a, is it a floor area requirement that triggers four?
Bedroom, right?
A duplex requires four parking spaces, no matter how large it is.
Two per unit, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I guess my, my question is, I guess they stay legal nonconforming no matter what, but did we just add, how many, how many bedroom units do we have now, with the addition of the new one?
I can answer that. There's three bedrooms per unit right now. We're adding a master suite on the second floor for the main unit that the owner owns.
So, there'll be?
Be four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms up, three bedrooms down?
Right.
Okay. Now, I'm starting to understand why they were concerned about the parking on it. So, okay. I mean, I guess I do have some concerns about that, especially when you're starting to use it as a rental unit. Let me, let me think about that for a minute.
We'll go around again.
Okay.
Still have some questions for you. Please don't go anywhere. The, I just want to follow up on some things that were said. You've got the owner, he doesn't live in the, the top unit, but he will be there for part of the year, or what?
He comes on weekends, or if he's got family that want to visit with him, they'll go out there. He lives in the Tustin area, and so, this is a duplex that he wanted to buy, so from time to time, he can come and stay in his duplex on the beach.
And he's going to park two cars in the enclosed carport?
Probably one car at a time, because they, you know, it's just himself, his wife, and he has two kids that will come. Sometimes might bring friends, but there's two cars that potentially could go in there, but yeah, that's, that's where it would be.
And when he rents out the first floor, is it, you have one dedicated spot, and then there are three spots across the street that you can use, but I may use them too, or what's the?
This property, if you look at it, compare it to other properties, as you keep going down Beach Road, it probably has more parking than most of the properties as you go down Beach Road. So, you've got some homes in there that are duplexes, but they have probably a bedroom, a bedroom count that's equal, if not greater, than what we have, based on the sheer size of the homes. So, and I know the planner is correct, I mean, we're not affecting more than 50% of this project, so that's why the three, it's a nonconforming use. It was three back in '64, when the county allowed it to be built. So, when he's there, generally, when he's there, he's just probably going to take up one of the parking spaces in the garage. His goal is, probably won't rent out the lower level very often. It's if somebody, let's say he has some people coming over, he and his wife and the kids will be on the second floor, and he might have some friends, they'll, they'll stay in the lower level. So, he's not, he's not really looking to make this a rental property, but he's, it's essentially like a simple, a guest house down below, that when he's there, they can also have their own facility down there, because it's got a full kitchen, it's a regular apartment. So, but he's never, has never intended on this being a rental property. It's a nice piece of property that he can come to, you know, on weekends, from time to time, and then when he's got friends, they would stay in the lower level. But he never, has no intention of renting this property out.
So, in other words, technically, it's a duplex, but he's treating it as one house with six parking spaces, if people can come over and will be able to park, if they're staying in the guest house downstairs, they can park in the garage maybe next to this?
They can park in the garage, they can park three cars across the way, they can park, remember, there's an open carport, right, an open space right next to the two-car garage, he can park there as well. So, again, if you look at the house and the bedroom count and everything compared to everything else, most of the homes in this area have two-car garages. And some of them, if they don't have, and not, and most of them have encroachments in that 20-yard, 20-yard setback, 20-foot setback, most of them don't have the luxury of parking in front of their garage. They don't have the luxury of having those three spaces, because as the property goes down, and you're going down more south, the Caltrans and the railroad cuts into it more and more, to where you get way down there, there is no additional parking, other than the two-car garage, and a lot of those don't have a driveway, because there are also encroaching into that 20-foot setback. So, parking is not an issue here. We've got probably more parking than most. It's just, he just wants to have a garage, not a garage, but a carport with a roll-up door, so he can, when he comes in, he can pull his car in there, and it's protected, knowing that the sides are still open. So, he's not going to have 100% protection, because he's got the louvers on the side. So, when we, we did the same thing the staff did, we kind of drove and walked the properties, and there's like three or four homes in this entire area that have carports. We're one of them. Everybody else has garages, and we're one of the few that, few right now, that have a detached carport. So, all we're saying is, we want to add a second floor, we want to keep the definition of a carport, because we have to, because, based on the variance, and we just want to put a rolling door to protect two things, to protect it, but visually, if you look at your design guidelines in the city, you guys encourage these doors, from a street view, for beautification and enhancement of property. So, you know, he doesn't want to have that just open the way it is today. He doesn't like the way it is today, that's why he's doing all this. So, he's put some, some, you know, quite a bit of money in this thing. He's just saying, I can't believe that the planning commission approved me, and says you can't put the rolling door in. That, this is kind of baffling to him, so that's why we appealed it.
Okay, thank you. I'll go around again. Councilman Wyatt, do you have anything?
Well, my, I'm just responding back to, actually to, I'm sorry. Responding back to both you and Council, or Mayor Pro Tem Miller, the, there's no requirement that they continue to rent the three spaces across, right? So, they do at the moment, and may continue or may not. There's also no, we're not putting a requirement on that the owner must live upstairs and use it, right? I mean, it's, it's, he owns one spot. So, making the decision on how it may be used today versus, because this has been this way for 50 years now, right? So, and, and we'll approve it, and we may have another 50 years to look at. So, the, the needs will, will change over that time. So, I don't think, I guess in my view, when we're thinking about the implications here, that asking specifically how this owner plans to use it in the near term is valid for looking at what we want to permit to happen, because the building will likely last much longer than the owner, unless he's, you know, whatever, I mean, unless, unless the sea rises more than we hope, I guess.
Okay. Do you, you have questions for the applicant?
No, I mean, I just was a comment, feedback to the two of you.
Okay, anyone else?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing no more questions, thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the staff, if you have any final comments. Ms. Luna Reynosa?
I just wanted to clarify the way our, our code is written in terms of legal nonconforming. I mean, because we would all love every project to come in, to have to conform to the new rules, but our code does say that people can do a certain amount of improvement to nonconforming structures, and that we cannot, you know, we cannot compel them to bring it up to the new standards until they hit that threshold. So, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear, and that's, I'll, Jonathan, did you have anything to add?
No additional points to add.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. With that, I will close the public hearing, and bring this back to council. So, I'll first ask, do I, do I hear a motion on this?
I move that we approve the appeal.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the appeal.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, very good. Alright, we'll start discussion. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, what I'm hearing is that we're basically talking about a garage door. People, people within 500 feet were noticed, and those are the people who are impacted by this, and I notice no one has come here to object to it. So, for me, that's very persuasive. You know, how your neighbors, how the people around you react to it is, is an important part of my decision-making. I think we need to understand that there's a lot of older properties here, and we want to encourage people to improve them, and sometimes that may require us to be a little flexible, but I want to see us encourage people to improve properties and increase the values of properties in Dana Point, rather than discourage them by processing them to death. So, for me, it comes down to, this is what, this is what the residents seem to want in their area, is improved properties, the garage door makes it look nice, you don't have a lot of crud, you know, sticking out, and it conforms with the rest of the properties. This is a, you know, very expensive piece of property, and I think the garage door is an enhancement to it, and so, therefore, I would support this.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I, in terms of second, just to follow that, I spent a fair amount of time working through this and discussing this with staff earlier, just to get an understanding. So, if it were built today, they would require a garage door, and an enclosed garage, because of the improved look. And basically, the other issue that they have there is, parking in this area is extremely limited, so when you're trying to make use of a property for something, if you're out providing them parking, it becomes much less valuable and, and, you know, usable as a property. So, I think it, the concern that we turn the three spaces into storage and let the people coming to use it, sort of figure out where they can park, is probably not a concern. I mean, and, so I think it makes it more consistent with the neighborhood, and it does improve the, the look of the property. So, I just wanted to make sure we thought through it very carefully and understood, but I think that it, it is consistent with intent there.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Thompson, Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I want to ask a lot of questions about this, because we, we always have a lot of concern about parking in Dana Point, and just what I heard tonight brought up other issues that I think we're going to have to address later this year. But you're absolutely right, it's a garage door, or I'm sorry, a operational door, okay. Yeah, that's what we're talking about here, you know. Everybody here knows I'm a private property owners' rights guy, and I'm looking at what, what the, the appellant is trying to accomplish down here. Uh, everybody here knows I'm a private property owners' rights guy, and I'm, I'm looking at what, what the, the appellant is trying to accomplish down here. And, you know, there's no way that we can foresee everything that everybody's gonna do. I mean, if we really wanna enforce the off-street parking, we just take the garage doors off everything. I mean, and we're not there. Actually, you're exactly right, we're, we're, you know, we want garage doors on, so we can't see what's going on in there. And so, you know, I think, overall, it's, it's a good project, it's, it's gonna enhance the area, and, uh, I'm gonna support this. I don't know, did anybody make a second on this motion?
Yes. Councilman Wyatt, second.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, thank you, I, I'll just very quickly add, I, I agree with Councilmember Lewis. I mean, we, this is a quasi-judicial action, uh, so we're sitting sort of as judges, and usually, uh, when you're hearings, when a judge hears something, there's, there are two sides to an argument. Uh, when the, the government and, and an appellant come in and ask the judges to do something together, I mean, you need some extraordinary reasons to, uh, to reject that. So, I mean, the fact that, uh, this, this is recommended by staff, a well-put-together presentation, well-put-together presentation by the applicant, uh, I, I think, uh, this is one, uh, that we should vote in favor of. Having said that, seeing no further discussion?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, um, so I just need to confirm with, um, Councilmember Lewis that her motion includes to lose condition of approval number twenty-seven, which was the condition added by the planning commission to, um, remove the garage door. So, by removing that condition, the operable door can stay in place.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody clear on that? Can you second that motion?
Yes.
Okay, very well, we'll call for the vote. That vote passes five to zero. Okay. Moving on to the next item, unfinished business, there are no unfinished business items. Uh, so, on to new business. First, uh, first item is item number eleven, the finicular tooth and power rail replacement. Uh, Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, General Services Director Mike Rose has a brief staff report for you.
Thank you, Mark, uh, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, item number eleven before you this evening is a repair project for the finicular at Strand Beach. Our Strand Beach Inclined Elevator is an electric-powered gear-driven vehicle. Uh, the vehicle actually rides on a set of track rails, and it's moved along the, by an electric motor, driving a round pinion gear that's engaged into a flat tooth rail, or a rack. Um, if that needs a little bit of demonstration, I will, uh, provide a couple pictures here just for illustration. Right here is what we call the rack or the tooth rail. It's two sets of rails, um, which is a flat gear. Um, you can see that it runs parallel and adjoined to the track all the way down the full length. And then in this picture, it's a little bit difficult to see, but this shows you the round pinion gear engaged into the rack. So, this is what drives the vehicle up and down the track. Um, over the operational period of the vehicle, um, this tooth rail has worn down, as demonstrated, an attempt to demonstrate it by this picture here, you can kind of see, um, the wear, the metal fatigue, and the chips coming out of these teeth, uh, on the flat, uh, tooth rail. This is representative of all the teeth, or the majority of the teeth, up, up and down the length of the track. So, that's just from wear of the gears engaging with each other over the operational life. Um, so at this point, it's, it's really time to replace these, this flat tooth rail, prior to our busy summer season. Currently, the lift operates two days a week and on holidays, so weekends and holidays only. As we approach Memorial Day, um, it will go into its normal seven-day-a-week operation, uh, which will increase the wear and increase the likelihood of a, of a long-term downtime for it. So, we'd like to take care of that replacement before we go into that operational, extended operational period. Uh, additionally, the power rails, which provide electricity to the car and run on the other side of the track, um, have worn down during that same operational period. These are aluminum, uh, conductors that are surrounded by, uh, this plastic PVC protective casing, uh, and those have worn down as well, and, um, we have reduced conductivity and increased, uh, resistance through the length of the track. Uh, and it's time to replace those as well, they're, uh, consumable over a period of time. So, we'd like, um, our recommendation is that we'd like approval to do both of these projects at once to reduce the, the downtime, um, in the operational, the operational downtime, uh, as we go, and get that all taken care of prior to our summer season. Um, so, staff is requesting that council approve a contract with outdoor engineers to complete the proposed project and approve an increased, an increase in budget to our Community Facilities District Fund Twenty-seven of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to complete this project. There's no general fund impact, um, to this project as it's funded out of the CFD budget. That concludes my report, I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, so that'll bring it back to council, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move the recommended action, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'll open it up to discussion, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson.
Mr. Rose, as I put on my phone, excuse me, sorry. Was that about the expected lifetime of, of both those components, was, was what, how many years?
It's, it's been about nine years, uh, of those components where they've seen the, the regular operation. I, at the time it was installed, I don't believe we had an anticipated life expectancy of those. Um, I would say in comparison to the lift itself, it is, it is about right, as we've already had to replace the vehicle due to wear and tear and the environmental, um, difficulties of the environment that it's, that it's, um, that it lives and operates in, um, being so close to the ocean. Um, with, with the replacement of the vehicle that we did a couple of years ago, we, um, took all the learning we had from the, from the first generation and tried to improve on that, on the second generation. With, with these items, we have learned a little bit, um, perhaps better, some better care technique on, on the gear rack itself, um, increased, um, lubrication, increased grease, applications to that to try and improve the wear, or the, the, reduce the resistance of the, the metal on metal. Um, the, as far as the power rails go, I think it's just a consumable item. Um, as my report indicates, um, the pickup shoes that, that actually take the electricity from those rails and transfer it to the car, um, are, those wear far faster, and those are replaced throughout the year, throughout each year. Um, and so, I think the, with that aluminum rail surviving in that very wet ocean air environment for nine, almost ten years, that, I would expect that we'd probably be replacing those again in ten years.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Wyatt?
A question, uh, related to taking it out of service, uh, in terms of just preparation. So, I agree that keeping it out of service, doing them both at once seems to make sense in terms of downtime. Uh, but we have a requirement to be able to provide access down during the time this is offline, as I understand it. Have we, uh, worked with, uh, the Headlands, uh, you know, the, the HOA to make sure we have, uh, access using the roadway down to, uh, transport handicap up and down as we need to during this time? When we're down?
We have not, we have not had that open communication yet, we, we are waiting to see if we had council authorization, but we will communicate with them.
We'll have to do that, right?
Identify those.
So, we don't wanna have them down longer than necessary.
We'll also provide some signage, um, providing alternate routes for ADA-accessible beach locations.
And then just as we start to learn life of these, can we set up, you know, sort of in the, I, I understand it, it's within this, uh, fund, but we should start to set up accrual of, of funds to make sure that we know our replacement schedule and anticipate costs going forward? That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis?
Uh, yeah, I wanna go a little bit into this money issue. Okay, so has the city been doing routine maintenance on this finisc, finicular each year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, um, is it inspected yearly?
It's inspected regularly, yes.
And so, do we set aside money each year to, um, to come up with the money to do the maintenance and now whatever it is we're doing this year?
Mr. Fielder?
Yes, this is a, what's paying for all, not only the operation, but also the maintenance of particular, are special taxes on the homeowners down in the strand. So, they pay an annual, I believe right now it's about twenty-eight hundred dollars per year, per house down there, that goes into our, uh, CFD maintenance fund. That fund had been collecting money, um, from only some of the homeowners, or property owners that bought from the developer, and it wasn't until, I believe, two thousand and fifteen that all hundred and eighteen parcels got included on the tax roll. When we had to replace the finicular car a couple of years ago, much earlier than any of us had anticipated, the general fund loaned money to the fund, uh, and charged interest. That, it was a three-hundred-thousand-dollar loan, it'll be paid back this year. Uh, there's sufficient funds to pay that back, plus, uh, pay for this project, and, um, there should be about two-hundred-thousand left in that fund by the end of the year. And, now that all the properties are on the tax roll, we should have about a positive, I wanna say a hundred and eighty to two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars a year going into that fund to set aside money for the eventual replacement again of the finicular car, and then eventually the track again. So, um, it got a rough start, because we had to spend a half-million dollars to replace that car, probably five years earlier than any of us anticipated, but the way Mike had it rebuilt, uh, with different materials, we expect a longer lifespan, and the revenues have gone up with all the properties on the tax roll. So, yes, we're setting aside a money.
And that car was originally put in by Headlands?
By the Headlands, uh, developer, yes.
And it was replaced by money from the Headlands?
From the maintenance fund that the property owners down there are paying, not from the developer.
Okay, so, is that, and, is that money that the city has to use for anything other than Headland?
No, there are restricted monies, it's a Mellow Roos special tax, and in that, in setting up that tax, there are specific uses that it can be spent on.
Okay, and are there other maintenance items or replacements that have to be done with that fund, so that by using this money, we're draining the fund and we're gonna be hit now with, oh, we have to do something else?
The, the only other large maintenance item, large dollar maintenance item that might come out of this fund outside of the finicular, as far as we've seen, might be the revetment, the rock revetment down on the bottom. It gets inspected regularly as well, and we've had no, no movement on that. But at some point in time, there could be a, you know, a huge storm, um, that could cause some issues and, and cost some money. But, at this point in time with the, now that, with all the properties on the tax roll, um, you know, give, give us a couple more years and we'll, we will have set aside, uh, money to deal with those contingencies as well, but we don't expect to have, like, a regular maintenance cost on the revetment. Mike has spoken to both the finicular car and now the track. There'll be some, uh, you have the roof on the finicular, uh, building at the top and the bottom, at some point, will need some work. There's some other, uh, components to that, but as far as large dollar costs, uh, we don't see them.
And, um, what happens if there isn't enough money in that fund to do whatever needs to be done? Is the city required to pay?
City has, there is no requirement that the city pay anything. And as Councilmember Wyatt mentioned, the requirement would be if we're not operating the car on these specified days, which are weekends during the off-season and holidays, as well as, I believe, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, if it's not operating for three, uh, consecutive of those days, then we have to provide access for people to basically drive through the development and drop folks off down at the bottom.
Okay, so, does, is the city required to do that? Does the city incur any expense because there's not enough money in there?
If this, like, the city chose two or three, three years ago to loan money to the CFD fund, um, at, with interest, to keep it operating like we did, to rebuild the car, then the city has that choice, but does not have the obligation.
Okay, and is the city in any way responsible? So, if there's any ADA lawsuit or something, are we responsible regardless of what's in that fund to make sure this finicular's running?
Not that I'm aware, we, we have fought those battles, but if, if there are any requirements for that operation, I believe it would be from that same fund that operates it, but I would have to turn to the attorney to see if, if the, if that's open any farther than that.
'Cause I know there was a lawsuit on this previously against the city, right?
Yes, the city was previously sued for, uh, ADA access, and the allegation of the case was that we were not providing access all the way down to the sand. Uh, we prevailed in that litigation, and so, we don't have any, uh, obligation to do that.
Right, but I'm, uh, I guess to Mr. Killer Brew's point, if it isn't operating, and the city, sounds like the city has an obligation to keep the finicular running.
The, the cities, the city doesn't have any obligation. If the finicular were to close, the impact is on the developer, the developer would be required, or the development, I should say,
Okay.
would be required to open its gates to allow for public access through that means. The issue of ADA access is already resolved, we, the court determined that, we, we didn't have any obligation to provide that.
Okay, and, um, do the residents who contribute to this fund, do they have any say in whether or not this, this expenditure is made and whether this contract is approved? It's their money, or is this, why, I, I guess I'm, I'm confused, why is this solely within the city's?
So, this is a special, it's a CFD, it's a Mellow Roos district.
Right.
So, it was voted on by the homeowners, in theory, but, I mean, at the time when the developer owned everything, so he, you know, cast all the votes. So, they create the CFD, the operational documents basically set it up in a way that all of these costs will be, uh, paid for by this CFD, and the city has given the power and authority to administer all this. Um, so, um, there's a, an assessment process that goes into that. But, all the funds are in this special fund that can only be used for these purposes, and the city general funds are not, um, at risk.
I guess just with power and authority often comes responsibility and liability. So, I just wanna make sure that we are using our authority properly, so that we are not subjecting ourselves to potential liabilities as trustees of this money, that, you know, we didn't do what we were required to do to keep this thing going.
If there was some sort of liability, it would be borne by the CFD.
Okay, and, uh, oh, the last question I have is, this is sole source, and why is that? As opposed to sending it out for bids?
My request for a sole source was based on the special, the specialty nature of this work. Outdoor Engineers is a contractor that originally installed with the developer this entire, um, equipment system. They've also, uh, are under contract to do the routine maintenance on it, so, and they are also the contractor who replaced the vehicle. Uh, the vehicle and the system itself is designed in Switzerland. Um, and then, we have a couple technicians who are local to North America, if you will, who come out and they do the, take care of all the maintenance projects and, and do all this work for it. So, they are the, the individuals who are extremely familiar with it. Um, just to give you an example, I, I met with a state inspector yesterday morning out on the site, and the state inspectors who inspect elevators and lifts and attractions, admittedly, have, they're just like, we have nothing else like this. Nobody, you know, nobody in our department knows anything about this, so please tell us about it.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a very, very specialized piece of equipment that the, the developer installed and, and gifted to us. So, this, this is my recommendation for the best way for us to take care of this device is to continue to utilize the individuals who installed it and know it the best.
Okay, and when you say original contractor, we're not talking about the original contractor that put in the defective car, are we?
It wasn't, well, the, I would argue the original car was not defective. It was designed to specification, um, along with all of the other, similar to all of the other vehicles that they put all over the world of this design. This happened to be the only one that's ever been installed at a beach. So, the corrosion, in, the corrosive environment, um, for that vehicle type, they just didn't mesh, and so we saw a severely increased wear and tear on, due to, you know, the metallurgy and, and the, the corrosion that we saw on the, on the original vehicle.
Okay, so it is that contractor, though?
It is the same contractor.
Okay, and nowhere else in the entire world, this is, this is by a beach? Or some sort of?
Most of, most of these cross-lift devices are installed at, um, as ski lifts, um, or in ski resort operations.
Okay, so it wasn't the moisture issue, it's salt?
Moisture, it's the, the corrosive salt moist, salt water.
Okay, I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Lewis kinda hit it, I was asking, gonna ask why it's sole source, you've kinda hit on that. But I guess my other question is, you said, what, there are two technicians in the country that can actually service this thing?
I think we're gonna have three come out for this project.
And so, i- if we were to hire somebody else to, to do maintenance and things on it, would that void our warranty with this company?
Um, there, there's no ongoing warranty on the item, on, on the car or the?
Well, even as we replace it, we get no warranty?
Yeah, they, they warrant, they warranty the item for, for a year from, from the time of installation. So, the, the lift itself is out of manufacturer's warranty at this point, and the, the track has been.
Right, so, but my question is, if we were not to use this company to ins- Right, so, but my question is, if we were not to use this company to install the track, how would that affect warranties moving forward?
We would require the installer to warranty the item for a minimum of a year.
Okay, well, what about the liability on it if we were to use a third party and something happened to the car? Because of something that the third party did on the rail and the tooth system?
That's a difficult one for me to try and answer.
I can address that if you'd like.
Okay.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is just sort of a typical indemnification issue in construction projects, it happens all the time if something bad happens, everybody points fingers at each other, and, you know, ultimately by the time it gets to trial, everybody has arguments about, you know, whose fault it was that the, the incident occurred. People are responsible for their own components. If the, using your example, if the track were put back in in a way that didn't coincide with the design of the car properly and that caused an accident, everybody would be sued, you know, the track installer and the car installer. And when it all sorted itself out, if the car installer could prove that they didn't do anything wrong, it was the track, then they'd have the liability to have to indemnify everybody.
What about the city?
The city typically gets named in these things, and we then turn around and seek indemnification from the installers, and in this case, you know, I say the city loosely, it would be the CFD. And if we had liability, then we would look to the CFD for special assessments to pay for it.
And so the CFD would still be responsible even if the city were the body that selected the different contractors?
The city, you're acting as the CFD, so I get a different hat on right now. So the CFD ultimately, I mean, think of yourself as a separate agency for that purpose.
Okay, and these tracks are all made out of aluminum, is that what they are?
No, they're steel.
They're steel? What, they coat them with that they last this long?
It's, it has a corrosion resistant coating, galvanization was, was placed on the, on the original. And keep in mind, we're not replacing the structural portion of the track or the load bearing portion of the track, just those tooth rails on the side. But it's, it's galvanized steel.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. In light of those questions, do we have any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. The motion was to move the recommended action, correct? And we have a second. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. That motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item 12, the 2018 Special Events Calendar. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you tonight, it is our annual calendar of special events in the city, both at city facilities and at other facilities that we use to populate the calendar that sits on the city's website and help promote all of the special events that happen throughout town to our residents and visitors. In addition, staff has solicited bids for the soundstage and lighting for the concerts, both at the Festival of Wales and the summer concerts in the park, and those are before you tonight as well. And I'd like to thank Brian McClure and Sherry Murphy for their work, and Brian is available in case you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Not at this time, thank you.
Public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Some.
Second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
And we have a motion and a second, I'll open it up for discussion. Mayor Porton Miller? No? Any other discussion?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Lewis.
Okay, so I would, I have a question. Are all these items reflected in our budget?
Yes, ma'am.
That was my question.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion passes five to zero. Okay, that concludes new business. Moving on, public comments have been closed. Madam Clerk, do we have any late public comment requests? Madam Clerk, do we have any late public?
No, none.
Okay, very, very well. Moving on to staff reports. City Manager, Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I just wanted to take the opportunity, if you haven't yet met him, Jack Holden is the city's new building official. Jack, if you'd just raise your hand for everybody. Very pleased after competitive recruitment to be able to select Jack and take him away from Imperial Beach where he received the California Building Official of the Year Award, so we've got a, an honoree among our staff now. He's done a terrific job integrating straight away, and he's been awfully busy and beginning to bring some new ideas and ways to improve services to our community, so really pleased to have him onboard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Denny, and thank you, welcome, Mr. Holden, we're glad to have you here and joining our great staff, I know you're gonna be a great addition. Thank you again. City Attorney, Mr. Munoz.
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing, okay. Moving into council reports, let me first read this. The City Council may discuss, act upon, or seek consensus on matters described under council reports only if their agenda is with a complete written report included, or if an item arose subsequent to the posting of the agenda and the council determines that an emergency exists. Non-agendized items may be presented as informational only. So we have an informational item here, item number 13. I requested a staff report on the status of our homeless task force work plan. So, Mr. Denny, do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for asking for this update for the City Council and the community. Kelly Renders has been our staff liaison to the task force, and she has a brief presentation for your council.
Thank you. Renders?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'm gonna give you a brief update on the homeless task force. I've added the word "community" work plan in because as this has evolved, it's really become more of a community effort rather than a city effort as standalone, so. Just really quick to go over the numbers, oops, we go back. We've had 16 homeless individuals housed, we've had one provided with diversion services, we currently have 46 active clients, 65 have been, a VI SPADA vulnerability assessment has been conducted, we've had 122 total unique engagements, 151 linkages to services, two clients are currently matched with housing, and 10 clients are document ready, waiting to be matched. This council has allowed us to engage in contracts with both Mercy House and Family Assistance Ministries. We are working to up our outreach to full-time six days per week, we're implementing intake and consent forms that will allow us to build a city database. We are working with FAM on a reconnection program and overnight support so that we can identify individuals who maybe have landed in Dana Point from, from other parts of the country and other places. We can house them overnight if, if need be in a motel, and then get them back to their support system the following day. We're also planning to use Family Assistance Ministries to visit some of our residential recovery facilities so that we can make sure that individuals that may be a part of those facilities when they are released do not end up on our streets. I know the print's kind of small on this, I'm gonna just go through this really quickly. We have a couple of different areas of our work plan. One is the purpose, then we have a section on engagement, a section on regional collaboration, implementation, policy goals, outcomes, timelines, elasticity statements. So I'm just gonna go through a couple of these. A lot of things have been completed as a part of this work plan. We have, obviously, worked toward the expansion of hours for an outreach worker, we've established a Homeward Bound program with FAM, which is that reconnection program I just spoke of, the overnight support is the motel voucher program. We are still in the process of providing some training and toolkits for staff and sheriff's deputies. We are in the process of reviewing policies relating to the sale of alcohol. We are working also to evolve the feed at Doheny State Beach to locate, to perhaps a faith-based organization that can provide outreach services as a part of that. That's in process, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a future slide. And, of course, we're always looking at best practices by other communities and municipalities to see if those are a good fit for our city and something we would look to implement. Onto regional collaboration, we do participate on an ongoing basis with the county, we're in very close contact with them, and we participate in their service program area of Fourth South County. We also, obviously, are collaborating with nonprofit service providers in our area on an ongoing basis. We are convening our faith leadership to align the resources, work towards a hand-up rather than a handout, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We are trying to develop tools for our business community so that we can help them deal with the impacts of homeless, while many of those things have been completed, we will probably be doing some additional ongoing work. And then we've been developing community resources and information about some of the solutions and some volunteer opportunities. To implementation, I've kind of lumped these three together because really we're working toward a housing-first model, we're working on having reportable outcomes and monitoring the effectiveness of our program. We are going to be instituting a monthly newsletter that will go out to the community that will report what's going on through our outreach and other programs so that we can just communicate directly with our community on the progress that's being made. And then we have this elasticity statement because basically it's a, it's evolving, you know, there are different funds that come in from a national, state, regional, county effort. We want to stay on top of those and be a bit nimble that we can respond as different opportunities may arise as we work through, you know, solutions to some of the challenges that the issue of homelessness presents us. So, as I mentioned, I wanted to talk a little bit about what's going on with our faith-based groups in town. We started convening our faith-based community in November. We are really lucky here that we have some really great, strong group of churches, and we have a compassionate group of leaders. They have been meeting now on a weekly basis to align their resources and collaborate in how they can integrate efforts with others working in the community, including nonprofits. One of the issues, as, as you have all heard, is, you know, we do have impacts associated with the feed that takes place on Doheny State Beach on a daily basis. We are working through our faith-based community to evolve what is taking place there, and they are potentially looking at a pilot effort to have a Saturday program, you know, once a week that includes a breakfast with wraparound outreach services on a church property. So we're looking at that as we, we have been working with, they have been working with Welcome In, who, who does the feed now at Doheny State Beach daily, to understand that our homeless do have access to food through existing programs and services that they can access during the week, and that we really will be looking at sort of increasing street outreach as we have as a city through, through your policy direction, but also as we may have community members who are, are looking to get involved so that we can have those daily touchpoints with those individuals on the street, which we know is, is important part of Welcome In's mission. So we're all trying to work together to move from a handout to a handup and sort of better align our services with best practices that are out there today, and mitigate, obviously, the community impacts that are currently happening down there. As I mentioned, we've done a lot of communications, this is just sort of a snapshot of a bunch of the different pieces that, that we've got out there. We're currently printing more of these so that we can get more of those pieces out. All of this is available on our website, all of these PDFs, but we're also printing hard copies so that we can have a greater distribution. There will be a bill insert on the "let your generosity be part of the solution," that will be in the March trash bills. And then we have a community forum next Tuesday night, that's a week from today, 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Capo Beach Church. We'll be getting some updates from law enforcement, which will be the Orange County DA's office. We'll be talking about city efforts, we'll be talking about our street outreach, and then really a goal here is to do the best that we can to answer the community's questions, and we really are encouraging the community to email their questions to us now so that we can make sure we incorporate all of that into our program, and that is at outreach@danaPoint.org. And that concludes my update.
Thank you very much, Ms. Renders. Does anyone have any clarification, questions for Ms. Renders? Questions for Ms. Renders?
I, I have just a comment to make on a point she talked about. Our work plan has a elasticity scheduled in our, our task force meeting last week, I think, yes, last week. We had a recommendation come up to, to follow up on what Mr. Yost commented earlier about more effectively involving our legislators in, in working with us, so we added to our task force agenda, putting together, you know, a regional proposal and monitoring and legislation, keeping everybody updated, sending recommendations in, engaging our community, and helping us put together legislation that helped deal with this. So I, I thought that was a, a great recommendation that came up in our task force meeting that we've added to our work plan to continue to expand how we can address these issues, so.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Renders, thank you for all the work you're doing and the staff. I want to thank the community members who are involved as well with this, and I want to thank all the council members who I know are focused on this issue, and especially Councilman Wyatt for chairing up this task force. So, moving around the horn here on council reports, I'll see if, Councilman Thompson, do you have anything?
I will turn in my list of meetings to the city clerk after this meeting.
Very well, Councilman Wyatt?
I have turned in my list of meetings. I also, two weeks ago now, I guess, spent two days in San Antonio, Texas, at Haven for Hope to, which was looked at as a model for best practices on how one, one area of the country has, has dealt with homelessness issues. And I have written a report, a trip report up, which I've included with my report handed in so it can be published out with the minutes, and those interested can read the report and look at what we learned in that. But it was a, it was a tremendous trip, we learned a lot about what worked and what didn't work, and, and got good advice on what we, how we could do things better and how we might fit it into Orange County. It was a, so I think it was a valuable trip for us to take in. I'm, have my report submitted from that trip in with my, within my meeting list tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Wyatt. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, okay, so here's my, under our rules, apparently, from 1997, we get to make three statements for the record in any one council session, each one being 50 words or less, so please forgive me if these sound a little stilted, but I had to make sure they were only 50 words. Statement one. I put item D currently shown on the closed session agenda, on the public portion of the agenda. The mayor moved them to closed session over my objection. I believe in transparency, and today was the opposite. Today was government in secret. Residents deserve to hear not just what happened, but why. Statement one. Statement two. Debates must be public unless we must protect confidential information per the Brown Act. The public needs to hear their representative's reasoning for a vote. That is American democracy. Excluding the public is not justified just because a matter is sensitive, embarrassing, or uncomfortable. I think the closed session for item D is unjustified. Three. Twice before, the city council has debated modifications to the city attorney contract, 121405, 7307. Both times, the debate took place properly in open session. Debate over competitive bid and form for attorney report should be in public, not in secret. Secrecy breeds suspicion. Thank you, I will turn in my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Mayor Porton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to welcome Division Chief Capo Bianco. I usually would come out and do that for you, but I haven't been feeling well, and we need to keep you on the street and not get you sick in here, so I asked the mayor to take care of that for me. And I will turn in the list of my meetings. Thanks.
Thank you, I have nothing to report, I've turned in my list of meetings to the clerk. Now, we are, we've come to the end of the meeting, we are going to recess into closed session again. However, before we do, I, I want to mention that tonight, on behalf of the city council, that I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Raymond Poole Woods Jr. He was an accomplished pianist, organist, and harpsichordist, and he had a long career in music education with socia, and, as well as choral conducting. in music education with Socia, and, as well as choral conducting. So I will be adjourning the meeting after we come out of closed session, but realizing that many of you may not be here then, I wanted to let you know that I will be doing that when we adjourn the meeting. That having been said, we will recess to closed session. Thank you.